Okay, thank you very much. We will call the meeting to order at 6:04. For anyone who has been looking at the published agenda, we had originally scheduled a non-meeting with attorney at 6:00 PM. That meeting has been postponed and we are now starting the regular meeting. Apologies to anyone that's catching off guard. First order of business is to appoint a process observer. Is anyone volunteering, Melanie?
Certainly are volunteering.
Thank you very much, Melanie. You realize I am appointing you because I find that you do an amazing job providing feedback.
Sure.
It's not random.
Wow, that makes it sound like you should do it all the time.
Aren't they a permanent process?
Do I hear a motion?
New position on the board.
But thank you very much. Are there any requests for agenda adjustments beyond the elimination of the first item?
Yes, just that in Rick's principal's report, he has the request for the potential field trip. So what I would ask is that when he goes through that, if we could just take the motion and vote on that. That's for robotics as they most likely, I would say, will qualify. It's just a matter of not having meetings, so if we can, I'll say, pre-approve it, then if they qualify, we can move forward with everything. So thank you for that.
In what sense is that an adjustment to the agenda?
Just that I didn't formally let the board know there was going to be a vote on a field trip, but we usually try to do that with Rick and I.
Oh, okay. Is there any objection to doing so? Just to be clear, we have Liz Brown on the phone calling in. We need to get information from her as to where she is in general and what it is that prevents her from being here and whether there is anyone with her. Liz?
Hi, good evening. I am in Orlando, Florida, attending a work conference, and I am in my hotel room and I am alone.
Thank you very much. Because Liz is participating by phone, all votes will be roll-call votes. And if I forget, please remind me. So I don't hear any objections to us taking under consideration the request for field trip at this time. I'm not sure how that discussion will go, but we can certainly talk about it. We have meeting minutes for approval. We will start with, what are we looking at? The public meeting minutes from December 12th. There are the following amendments being offered to it. Page four, line 42, replace the period before Principal Barnes with a comma. Do you object, Principal Barnes?
No objection.
And page eight, line five, school should be plural. Can I have a motion to accept as amended the public meeting minutes of December 12th?
So moved.
Moved by Cindy, seconded by Melanie. Are there any, is there any discussion or any other comments or corrections being offered? Seeing none, we will put that to a vote, get a roll-call vote. Start on my left.
Cindy, aye.
Tom, aye. Liz?
Aye.
I abstain. Krista abstains.
Okay.
Holly, aye.
Melanie, aye.
Okay, we have five ayes, one abstention.
Were you here for the minute reading of that meeting?
December 12th. Was that the meeting you were in?
She, yeah, she was.
Okay. Okay, I apologize. I am, I thought this was a different meeting we were voting on. I got confused with the SAU meeting. I am abstaining. Liz, you were not there either. Sorry about that. So we've got one, two, three yes and three abstentions. Let's see. Then we have non-public meeting minutes from December 12th with no proposed amendments. Can I have a motion to approve the non-public meeting minutes of December 12th as presented?
So moved.
Moved by Cindy.
I second.
Seconded by Holly. Any discussion or corrections? Seeing none, by roll-call vote.
Cindy, aye.
Tom abstain. Liz?
I would be abstaining as well.
Krista abstains.
Holly, aye. Melanie, aye.
Thank you. So we have three ayes, three approve, and three abstentions. Nominations, resignations, retirements, or correspondences.
We don't have any tonight.
Wow.
That section goes quickly.
Please make note of the arrival of John Cross at 6:11. Now we move on to public input. Is there any public input? We have no public input. Wow. It is 6:14 and we are ready to start principal reports. How would you gentlemen like to proceed? Is there a preference?
I'm happy to go first. Or you can go.
So my report is included in the packet, but I did want to highlight a couple of things. One that's not in my report is I'd like to congratulate eighth grader Caitlin Mace. She's the 2018-2019 HBMS Spelling Bee Champion of the World.
Yay!
So she will compete on February 23rd or her alternate, depending on whether or not she can make that. So we're proud. I have to tell you some of the words. Xanadu, for example, was one of the words that was, that she had to spell, which is pretty impressive.
How do you spell it?
I know it begins with an X. So congratulations to her, we're very proud of her. Also, tomorrow after school, we'll host our second annual Coaches vs. Cancer event. This is being put on by both the boys' and girls' basketball team. Last year, the fundraiser raised several thousand dollars for the American Cancer Society. So anyone at home listening, we invite you, the game starts, the event starts at 3:30. There's lots of games, activities, raffles, so don't miss the action. And then finally, just again this year, this is the third year, we'll be partnering with the Portsmouth Naval Shipyard and the University of New Hampshire to offer our Sea Perch program for our eighth graders. So on February 12th and 13th, engineers from the Portsmouth Naval Shipyard will come to HBMS and work with our eighth graders to build their underwater robots. Then the week before February break, we'll travel to UNH. We'll go to the Marine Engineering Lab, where students will have the opportunity to test those robots in the pool. So we're excited for that. Again, this has become an annual thing that is a really great learning opportunity and a STEM opportunity for our kids.
Great, thank you.
So as many of you know, if you have a student in the building, this is the wonderful week of midterms. That's why our student rep is not here, because she's home studying. Also, one thing, you have my board packet, so I'm happy to take questions. The one thing that's not in there, I had the honor and privilege to travel with Mr. Duval's AP Government class to the We the People competition up in Concord, where his students testify regarding many elements of constitutional law and debate with attorneys. Throughout the day, they made the finals and narrowly missed winning the entire thing, but took runner-up. So very proud of their performance. It was a great afternoon to spend, a long afternoon, but a great afternoon to watch them basically litigate constitutional law. So we have an army of lawyers in our building, so emerging lawyers. So very excited and happy for them. And that's about all I have.
Did you want to, you want to do the move into the field trip at this point?
So in the, the one action item I do have is the possibility of an overnight field trip. We did do it last year. It goes to Detroit for the First Robotics Championship Worlds Competition. The, there, I believe you have a motion as well with the correct dates. Some of the dates were off by one because we used last year's calendar when we should have used this year's calendar. The reason why I'm putting this out now is, you know, the times when we have gone, it seems to have fallen either right after we've had a meeting or hasn't been enough time. So I'd like to put it out there now for approval in advance rather than waiting and scrambling and asking whether they can go. And it also allows them to plan a little bit ahead. I think they're anticipating that they'll make it this year. So it just allows them to get their things organized in advance rather than scrambling because they will be here before we know it.
Are there any questions or discussion regarding the request form that was distributed in your packets? Are there, are there any staff members to call?
I do not believe so. They're all mentors.
But this is a school function?
I see it as a school function, yes. It's a school, it's First Robotics, it's our high school.
Is there any problem with there being no school staff involved in the field?
Am I correct that we have the paid positions involved?
Yes.
Okay, so the big, I'm sorry, yes, in the scope, they are technically, they are technically staff. We do have employees. Okay, we have employees, so that there is contractual.
Yes, 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 there are.
Okay, thank you. The only other thing is, are there any concerns about liability or insurance of someone using their personal vehicle as a tow vehicle? You may want to check with our insurance on that item. Make sure the person's adequately covered, not burdened on them. Is this approval final or subject to confirmation if we?
I think Rick has, I think what Rick is looking for is that we've got approval from the board. Once we know they're finalized and they're going, we will email you and let you know more of what's the exact specifics. The proposal covers everything.
So it won't have to come, unless something changes, it will not have to come before the board.
That's the goal.
Okay. And could you just restate for me, just for accuracy of the motion, what the dates are?
So 4/23 would be the date of departure, and then 4/28 is when they are returning.
At this point, I'd appreciate a motion to approve the request for the First Robotics students' trip to the world competition in Detroit, Michigan, scheduled for April 23rd, 2019, through April 28th, 2019, should they qualify and be eligible to attend. That's correct.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion, seconded by Holly, discussion.
Second by Krista.
Oh, it's Krista? Second by Krista. Melanie?
You had asked two questions. Is the decision pending? Will it answer to those questions or will it?
What questions?
Two questions that you asked about.
One question was answered, which is there are staff members who are okay. The other was just a suggestion, not a question. At least from my perspective. Any other questions or discussion? John just, Liz is participating by phone, so all votes are roll-call votes. So when I call for a vote, I'm going to name it you first.
I guess I have a question. Why did we approve travel? I mean, as long as it was, is it because it wasn't budgeted for originally?
No, it's not a financial.
It's not the cost of the taxpayers.
No, it's self-funded. It just seems to me like if our jurisdiction is budgeted and managing the superintendent issue.
From the standpoint that we are representatives and advocates for the community as well, it's, I don't believe there's a legal requirement, but it is a procedure that we have followed for travel to just keep checks and balances in place to make sure that it's not being done with any surprise.
It's only for overnight travel. We don't approve, we don't approve field trips daily.
Right.
And it's also, we are also charged with curriculum. So I mean, you could say some, many of this is an extracurricular thing, but sometimes it's good to see that the things that the kids are doing, taking time away from school, some of them are, is either curricular or extracurricular.
Quite frequently, we are approving effectively payment of staff members for activities that are potentially outside the description of their daily work requirements as well. But it's a fair question and it has been brought in the past as to whether or not, it has not been something that the board has necessarily pushed. It is something that has been requested by administration to make sure that they are not going to be called in the carbon future for doing something that was perceived as inappropriate.
Tom, would it not be also policy-driven? Field trips and excursion, I J O A.
Yeah, it falls under category three, especially this one, because it could include travel up by the United States.
Right, so any outside the United States travel must be approved regardless of it's a repeat trip? And then any travel that's overnight has to be approved the first time it happens.
Well, I assume it was policy or whatever.
Yeah, but the policies are required by law. Yeah, you know, you're 100% correct.
The strip, it could go through Canada theoretically.
And it does, they might.
Yeah. I would caution them about making sure well in advance if they are, if they have passports.
We've had that full conversation, so.
And you know where you're going.
I do, I do know a good place to go.
As I said, because recently, the Milton Public Library has become a passport station for new passports, and they have made offers to the local, the area schools that if notified, they will set up a timeframe and bring in multiple people so that multiple passports can be applied for in a relatively short period of time.
I was sure to explain to them my experiences with students traveling across the border and what happens when you have things that you need to have.
Thank you very much. Are we ready for a vote? Roll-call vote. The motion is to approve the trip to Detroit for the robotics. John?
Yes, aye.
Okay.
Cindy, aye.
Tom, aye. Liz?
Chris, aye.
Krista, aye. Holly, aye. Melanie, aye.
The ayes have it. Thank you. We have this.
Brian wasn't able to be here tonight. I do want to just, he asked me to highlight a couple things in his report, more for the community rather than the board who gets the report. Just, he was very pleased to announce he had forty senior student athletes recognized as NHIAA Scholar Athletes. Student athletes must have a B-plus average or better, participate in community service, and must letter and be currently active in at least two NHIAA varsity sports in their senior year. So I want to commend all of those students. That's a tremendous job. As we all know, I think we have a rigorous curriculum, and when you combine that with athletics and extracurricular, curricular activities, it really shows how our students shine. I also wanted to note that we have a tennis update. The Nashua Swimming Tennis Club has assured us that the courts will be available this spring. If you remember, we talked in the fall because there was a potential for them to be doing renovations and us still needing a site. So Brian is taking care of that, and I thank him for his efforts there. And I just wanted to let the board know, we have hired a boys' lacrosse head coach. Cameron Hayward is coming on board. We're very excited to have him. And our outdoor track coach at Hollis Brookline Middle School will be Christina Meehan. Notice the items that Brian just wanted me to touch upon.
And we also, in our packet, had a student report, and I want, they're not here, thank you for the submission of that information. The topic on the L's brings up just a question that came up in an offline conversation I had with a board member. Are we doing anything, like anything active about the committee's schedule?
I'm looking at their master schedule. Do you hear that? We want that to be added over the knowledge.
Are there, is there a committee, right, that the actual committee that was formed?
Well, presently, that should be focused on the middle school, looking at ways to potentially make the middle school and high school schedules better aligned, so we can take advantage of more opportunities between those two buildings. We have a long way to go in that process. And then that committee will morph up to the high school and do a review of the various components of Rick's schedule.
We do have a board member. Have you been involved with that question?
I haven't, but, because we just, we talked about the start time committee, when that started morphing that, morphing that into a scheduling committee. So that might not have been part of the middle school thing.
Okay. I'm just wondering, yeah, we might want, there are members of the board who are interested in participating and being included. If they could be brought online, that would be good.
Bob and you and I have noted that, and they will be reaching out.
The other thing I'm bringing up now, only because I remembered it and I don't know where else to do it, but I was a little bit delinquent in being aware of it, so I don't know if anyone else's next month's meeting has been moved a month, a week earlier. It is the 12th, I believe.
13th.
13th?
Yep.
The reason for that is to allow, is it Brookline? To move theirs up out of the vacation week.
I'd celebrate St. Valentine's Day and celebrate St. Valentine's Day. So technically not a move out of the schedule was that when we approved it back?
Right, it was moved.
Right. It's not a move.
It's not a move, it's not a move, so it's a reminder that it's not on the third Wednesday of the month in.
So what date is it actually on?
It's on the Wednesday, the second Wednesday of February.
What is the number of the day?
Two, one-three, one-nine.
Thank you.
Unless you're in Europe.
Yeah, oh-two, one-three, two-oh-one-nine.
No, that would be one-three-oh-two.
One-three-oh-two.
Because Sadie doesn't know what day it is right now. Okay, thanks for that digression. We have concluded principal reports and are ready to move into discussion. You want to start off with the budget?
Yes. I'm pleased to inform the board that at last month's Budget Committee meeting, we arrived at an agreed upon number, which the Budget Committee supported five to one. There were some cuts since our last meeting, but I was comfortable with those on basically the second last page of the Excel spreadsheet that was in the packet. I'm going to work off of that. When we left our last Budget Committee meeting, we had just added in the turf field fine payment. So that forced a recalculation of guidance. But since we weren't unable to do that recalculation there that night, it put us about $359,000 away. And what Budget Committee had asked is for Kelly and I to go back and look at the numbers knowing that there was some compromise there. So the first thing we did was we added in the additional transportation costs because of the SAU approval of $36,684. Kelly made some various small adjustments to the budget for $4,154.97. We've got a more concrete number for our Spanish textbooks to be able to degrease that by 1997. As we discussed by Rick's proposal of moving PE to extended learning opportunity potential, we felt very comfortable reducing that PE position from full-time to part-time. So that resulted in a savings of $31,700. We made the decision from a SAU perspective, looking at all three budgets, that this year was not a year that we could afford the facilities director for the co-op, or the co-op portion, I should say. So we reduced that position by $54,724. We also looked at a nurse help position. In reviewing that, we had added hours already to address student services, so we felt comfortable with the co-op, so we decided to not move forward with that for $25,732. The project leadway material, we moved out of the operating budget into Title IV. New Zeller?
When you do that, we don't bring in as revenue line and expend it, expend it in budget.
The Title IV comes in under revenue, and then it just becomes, no, we don't, we just do it instead of revenue. Right. Title IV is actually just come back. It had gone away for many years. So what we're talking about is, just so you know, the project leadway at $8,000 as well as the middle school spot for $4,000, because Title IV is putting an emphasis on technology and those type of curricular areas. So the general work with our Title IV funds and Kelly manages grants, so that was, that $12,000 will come out of there. So both of those items are going to be purchased. They just won't be in the operating budget.
But that doesn't have to, so we won't see that money, that grant money on the revenue side either?
That's correct.
Okay.
New Zeller is coming out. We've got a number of software packages already at the middle school that Bob agreed that he thought we could survive with what we had. We moved their food service server to the food service department. We feel comfortable. I think people are aware we have a new food service director. I think her work is paying great dividends, and I think we'll be able to put that into their budget.
Just, are they people or computers?
That's a good question. Food service service.
It used to be one and the same in the old days.
Yeah. The camera updates, we are taking out the majority of that. We will look at, because these cameras would be for the parking lot, so we would use the parking lot funds. And a portion of that is also Bob's building, and Bob has informed me that he's very comfortable with the coverage we have. The cameras he installed are really, done a tremendous job, so we were able to reduce to $20,001.93, knowing that if we get that grant, Rick will match that through the parking funds. We are moving the field parking goals out at this time, and we moved a portion of the roof into the high school, into the, moved a portion of the high school roof into the maintenance trust, reducing that by 35. So a number of things we're still getting, we're just changing our accounting system and where they're coming from. We also went into Phase Two. In Phase Two, there you'll see Rick had put in about $6,000 approximately for window seals and pest control, which is reducing that down. It will take care of those projects. And then the point two French teacher is, what was the title? We were also able to put that into Title IV under class reduction. The other pieces is.
What is class reduction?
Size reduction.
Oh, class size reduction.
So that brought us down to an increase that was approved of $1,583,747. Just to share with you, I'm going to give you the four major drivers, so if you approach by somebody. Our special ed increase was approximately $500,000 with the move-ins and services we needed to provide. The health insurance increase was about $340,000 approximately. And these two items, the voters approved last year, so they're in the budget. The voters approved the teachers contract at approximately $325,000, and the voters approved the field for about $206,000. So when you just look at those four numbers, those are the main drivers. We are able to get the increased teacher at the high school as the board requests. And then we are also, if you recall through Rick's adjustments to the program of studies, we were able to pick up another social studies teacher, so we'll be able to reduce the ratio to. were able to pick up another social studies teacher, so we'll be able to reduce ratios. Rick will choose eventually what that teacher is, once he gets a little further into his schedule. And we wanted to do that, just to make sure we were reducing class sizes to the best of our ability. I want to publicly thank the Budget Committee, thank Mr. Cross for all his efforts representing the school board on activity. I think it's been a very good process, I think it's been some really good discussions, and I know it's still an increase, but I think it allows us to put the education programs in place that we want. And because of the fixed costs that we can't worry about, it's relatively proven budget.
John, do you have any, any comments as a, as a board member, specifically regarding items that were in there or deleted, that you found noteworthy? Our administrators understand the depth of it, I think we as board members sometimes have a much more superficial view, so I'm just wondering if there's anything that you would like to highlight to our attention beyond what Andy has said.
Yeah, I had a little, well, the answer's not really, but I did take up a few notes that I was going to share with you guys. Let's see, the operating budget is, turned out to be about 6.87% over guidance. I've only done this one so far, but that sounded, that seemed pretty good. And also, I think when you think about that, you have to consider the fact that there were some items that weren't actually added for relief, which I personally thought probably should have been. But even then, you know, the, there was good discussion about tax increases, you know, what kind of budget would be palatable to the taxpayers. There's a lot of increases that we don't have any control over already, so it was coming in higher, from what I understand, than it has in years past. So, a lot of good discussion and consideration of what would be a reasonable budget going forward. And even then, not considering these items for relief, the Budget Committee had asked Andy, his team to get a little more aggressive and try to bring the budget down a little bit, as he's described, and I think they did a pretty good job of that. So I didn't see anything that would concern me. I did have some questions, and for the most part, all the answers kind of led towards Andy and his team having a good plan forward, if it comes on something this year, they have a plan to do it in upcoming years, or spread it, spread the, divert it over a number of years, so not fully affecting something to conclusion, but working on it over the next couple of years to bring the budget down. So in the end, I think it turned out pretty fair, pretty reasonable budget. And again, you know, nothing really stood out to me personally as something of concern. It's a good job.
Melanie?
Is the vote for the Budget Committee, was that five, one?
Five, one. There were two, two versions that went there that night.
And what was the reason for the vote against the budget?
Just reflect the low number.
There was a phase of cuts that only one person on the committee was comfortable with. And that actually, that would move the day tank, was that one?
Right, if you were to, Melanie, on that same page, it says Phase Three additional reductions, that would have been moving the day tank to the maintenance trust. And what we shared with the Budget Committee is, we could do that, but we were concerned that if the maintenance trust in the past, we had a, basically a $40,000 item that had to be done, because the law had changed. So the original motion was to put a number of the 6.7% increase of one, five, four, four. That motion lost two thoughts. Then we moved up to Phase Two, which is one that Kelly and I believe we could support, because we knew we had a French teacher in the Title IV, and we knew we were getting that practically the way, and the spot board and things of that nature, which were curriculum things, because we tried to avoid cutting any curriculum matters, but we knew we had an alternative funding choice, we want to take advantage of that.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So if that point two French teacher's in Title IV, will that be something you can do again, like next year? Is it, is it, like you said, now they're focused on technology, will they change their focus, and then you won't be able to do it again? Sorry.
It's hard to say, because last year, Title IV is a competitive grant, so we weren't eligible. This year, it's non-competitive, so we were eligible, we had to kind of describe our purpose and how it matched and aligned. It wasn't just technology, it also was exposure to world language, and like the whole child. So there are a couple different facets that we could hit upon. It really depends on the availability of federal funds, so I can't really answer that, but you could certainly move that position into the budget the following year, just as we attempted to do this year.
That's the only reason I'm asking, is because people should be prepared for the fact that this might not, you might have to move this to the budget next year, it just depends on, it's grant, grant funded position, so it could change.
And the other pieces, that also comes back to what I'll say, core sign-ups.
Right.
Because we do have some potential for staff at the high school, or the existing staffing, that may be picking up traction, it all depends on what the student sign-ups look like.
Do you remember the cost of the drinking water?
The, the day tank or the water itself?
The water. Well, anyways, I just thought it was noteworthy, how close you guys came to guidance, and if you included the day tank, which is required by law, and the drinking water testing under relief, then we would have been even closer to guidance, so.
The water is $10,000.
Okay.
It's five each of the.
Testing the water?
The testing of the water, yep.
Every single faucet, every single water fountain, every single, it's really important to do that, though, in the management.
Yes.
I don't need to harp on this, but I'm just really curious, why don't we flow?